Would we rise?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Pillar, would you please lead us in the...
Yes. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that you can direct us and you can provide us the wherewithal and the wisdom that we need to make good decisions on behalf of our citizens. And we just thank and praise you for all the gifts that you give to this city and to each one of us. In your name we pray.
All right, approval of the minutes from the June 3 meeting.
Motion approved and stern reading.
I think we have a motion by hack. Yeah, second by discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes from June 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. We are adding one item under introduction and reading and approval of ordinances. It'll be under 7A. I will add Mr. Harvey on this, under drone ordinance discussion. Any other additions, changes, corrections to the agenda? Now I take the motion to approve the agenda.
Take the motion to approve the agenda with the noted addition.
Thank you. Motion by pillar. Second by stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carried. All right. Engineers, agenda, project update. Jared, welcome.
Thank you. You all have got the this, I hope? Okay, all right, so I'll just go through it. Street project, there's three kind of categories. There's remaining work, there's warranty work, and then there's extra work. So, remaining work that we have not had them do, that we need to pay them for eventually is the chip sealing and pavement markings. Sounds like they'll be in sometime around the 4th of July, I believe, after the 4th of July, unless you've been told differently. No? Okay, all right, so they'll do that work. Sweep, put the chips down, and then a week later they'll sweep off the loose chips and then do the pavement markings sometime after that before the revision date.
Jared, question on that?
Sure.
Will John or someone be around when they sweep? Just to make sure we do a decent job, we don't have such excess like we did last fall. It seems like it was country road for a long time around here, so.
I can have someone there. They did my street in Bismarck last fall too, and this spring my bulldozer's full of rock chips, so it's gonna be...
We want to, absolutely, we want a good application, obviously, so.
Okay, so, John will be here. Basically, warranty work, that work that has been done, that is, that has to be corrected. The major items have been addressed. There's a few minor things still on the punch list. There's some asphalt in the manhole that we were made aware of last month. Don't believe it's been cleaned out yet, okay? That's something we have to verify. And then, to me, the big one is turf establishment. We did not have very good growth on the grass. If you remember, they did more dormant seeding last fall. They tried to do that, where they did the seeding in November and almost none of it came up. So, it's something, the spec says that it's gotta reach 90% growth, two inches tall, and it's definitely not there. So, it's something that's gotta be addressed, and I just talked to Ted a few minutes ago, and he wasn't sure what they were gonna do, but unfortunately, they do have a little time to get this done, but, you know, time will be running out, so I...
Do you remember what that line item was for?
I don't... Mostly around, you know, back a curve or ADA ramps, those small little pieces. So, probably two of their locations, a couple more.
Well, I can attest just to my locations. I've overseeded and babied my, and a couple of my... To get 90%, it'll be nine years. Whereas 90% grew up in two inches, it's barren, you know? And the weeds are ridiculous that come out of there. And I know Monstrelone has nothing to do with the weeds that were in the soil. That was not there.
Right.
But, yeah.
Yeah, this is a tough one, but it's gonna have to get addressed.
Yeah.
All right, so that's punch list stuff, and then extra work. We've had some discussion about adding some parking lot chip sealing. That's kind of the biggest one. Because we're looking at having a bunch of public parking lots done in town. I have a change order here, or I, no, I don't have it here, but they provided the pricing. We've done some double checking, asked for other quotes, and the prices seem to be in line. While they seem a little high, but compared to the other quotes we got, actually pretty reasonable, so. It's up to the council's decision, or do you guys want to do the additional chip sealing at parking lots for $32,355? And I don't have a map of the project areas. I don't know if Monty has one or not. We measured all the parking lots that we wanted done, and... These are his parking lots?
No.
City parking lots?
So, those would be across the street here, behind the city hall, behind IBEW.
Hill, Crowes, Park, Crown.
Crown Hills, Crowes, parking lot.
Fireball and the city shop.
Okay. Okay.
So, if you approve it, I'll have them order and haul in the extra chips, and they haul it to the rest of the town, and it'll just do it there. It's up to you guys.
I was wondering, parking lot, I guess, is a chip seal gonna be the best thing, parking lot, if it's not gonna get really driven over?
You probably noticed on Main Street, driveways stick down really good, but the parking areas don't. I mean, when you chip seal, there's two parts. There's the oil, and there's the chips. And the oil seals all the cracks, prevents everything from getting into it. The chips are harmless, and they're the, they're there to make it resistant, tough, lasts a long time. I, you can seal coat without doing the chips, but for the little bit of extra money, it's worth it, so.
And all of these areas are, are ready to be chip sealed?
They should swell.
There's no degradation of asphalt or anything in these areas that we're just putting lipstick on, okay?
I don't know if we have a patching scheduled for them or not.
I know the one behind IBEW, that one has some issues, doesn't it, Dave? That weed out, but some patch in there first, or?
It holds water.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if it's not in a condition. Are we, are we doing anything for the betterment of it, or does it need some modification before you do a chip seal on it?
Yeah, like some patching, or if it's retaining water, does it make sense?
And that parking lot alone, just from what I see, because I drive by it a lot. It does hold some water in some areas, but there are some areas that have some issues, and that might be 5% of it might have patching issues of where it needs to be filled in for it. But obviously, the cold patch we do, but it isn't, isn't the ticket either, but...
I have not studied all the parking lots. Chip seal, you should expect five years. That's a maintenance that gives you a good five-year life expectancy before you should be doing anything again, so.
But that's assuming it's in reasonable shape to begin with, right? And that's, that's the general question I'm asking. Are all of these in the type of shape that the chip seal is going to give us reasonable additional life?
I have not been done with all the parking lots. John, I think, measured all, but no, to be for modesty, I have not looked at them.
Well, I would think, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, just the, I guess, a seal, a seal like a loan. Even in a sort of like that, in that, I guess, like shape would be, would be, I mean, a benefit.
Okay.
So, the majority, there'll be a few spots, yeah.
There's some cities and counties that use chip sealing as a paving surface, you know, they'll have a gravel road and then just chip seal it. And that's their, that's their street, so. It's, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but it's pretty good.
I just wanna make sure our people are getting the bang for their buck.
Is there any asphalt around any projects nearby that, you know, so, for instance, the parking lot number talked about that has a couple holes.
Get some patching done there.
Yeah.
First, I would call Ted, just to make sure, but I can do that. And there's little tiny asphalt I turn onto, you know, but specialize in parking lots and little patches.
Yeah.
Ted knows he gets a big voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe what we wanna do, we can, we can certainly make a decision one way or the other tonight, but maybe we have you folks take a closer look at these areas and then bring it to a halt if, if you're concerned with it. If not, then we just, we'd move forward if that's the wishes of the board.
Sure.
I'll go back to me.
Okay.
Need to be a motion?
Yeah.
That was, that was a motion, by the way.
Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by hack. Discussion. Okay, so after the meeting, Jared, if you have time?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there are patches, try and get them done.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar. Aye. Ted.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye.
For clarification, the motion was to proceed with deep parking with chip seal, pending review by the engineer.
That's exactly what he said.
I could've said it better, man.
Yes.
That's the ambulance area, too, isn't that?
Yeah. Did look at that.
And that'll be going directly to.
Okay.
All right, next on my list is survey monuments. I did talk to your local surveyor on Friday, and we kinda went through this last fall. There's a number of, like, there's about another 10 more that he brought up to the city that he thinks were affected by the 2018-2019 construction project. A lot of them are in concrete, and when we discussed it, it, it's not exactly clear. It's not exactly clear why your survey monuments are in concrete, because the concrete shouldn't be on private property, or whatever that property corner is. It's the corner of private property. Your sidewalks should be on the public right of way, so there's some underlying issues here with some of these. So, I, I do need a little bit more time to probably discuss with him. We talked on the phone on Friday, but I haven't met him out there. He does think there may have been a little carelessness on a few of these, but it's not just black and white exactly what's going on, so.
Carelessness in the placement of the concrete, or it's placed from the...
No, careless...
Contractor removing them.
Right.
Okay.
Or the skister equipment. He thinks that it might have been some of that, but it's not, it's not too perfect. Where we had the one by Casey's house, that should not have been damaged, because it was away from the concrete in the yard. Damaged, contractor's fault, but it's in concrete, and he had to remove it to do the work, then it's, we're not gonna make him pay for it. So, anyways, I will follow up on that there. Okay, so then really, next, I have on your pages 2, 3, and 4, change order number 4. John was at your meeting about six weeks ago, and you guys went through a list of items with contractor. He, it was John and Ted here. They provided some pricing, this additional work in town, and I have the change order to approve from that discussion. The only thing that was added really since that time was some sidewalk in front of the hospital, that I believe is being built to that. Otherwise, change order's in line with where it should be. Change order is $12,197. Previously discussed and approved work, and I need the council to approve it.
And that $12,000 includes the hospital parking lot area?
Yes.
Where the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that.
So.
Motion by hack.
Second.
Second by discussion.
So then, is this for, for all of them, like, four of them, or is this, this for, this for this number four?
Change order for covers, the work that was on that list, when John went through it, so all those items. I believe when we talked to you guys about it, it's about $7,000, and then this sidewalk, the hospital's another five, and so.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So, it's all?
It's all.
New discussion. Roll call.
Ted.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over. Motion carried.
Okay, then the next item we have is payments to mail that pretty much matches that. $12,996.38, so paying for the work they did.
And then motion to approve payment? Motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by power. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Ted.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried.
I've got my own list in here, too. Do you want me to go through that as well? What was that on your listing bills?
That's it, during the bills.
Is it? Yeah, I'll be here during the meeting. Let's show me to bring it up or go through that right now.
My wolf, my...
Okay, all right, so it's item for page number 13 in the back of there. So, a lot of the work being done this spring is construction work, so most of the services are related to the two construction items. Phase 440, which is construction contract admin, and 410, which is RPR work, so John Schroer. So, there's hours and time to refer to work the last few months.
Any questions for, for engineer on that before we... Okay, we need a motion to, hey, Jared and John, apparently.
Maybe we can just do a little bit of bills.
Doing the bills, okay, all right.
Yeah.
We'll wait for the bills.
Sanitary sewer manhole. You guys ordered that like six weeks ago. For Kera, who's building that manhole, they're very busy. It's scheduled production next Wednesday or Thursday. It's one manhole, and they've got a lot of good, bigger, much bigger clients than you guys, so they didn't pull it ahead of anybody. So, apparently, it's being built then, and it should be ready to be shipped just a couple days later. So, they'll, they'll deliver days, and I'm sure, according to Dave, where to put it, but your local contractor can do the work. Or is lined up to do the work, or get the quote. So, that's that, and then expedition states. A month ago, I stood here and asked that we extend the completion date by 30 days, because the contractor said that he would be back to do the work. We had some email correspondence with him a couple days ago, Monty and I, and I have not heard a move since like last Wednesday or Thursday, so.
They didn't have a call from the project manager today, Mr. Wolf. They do need a little more time. Jason, Eminem explaining, he is coming back to do the work. He's hoping to have his wheel loader or hoe here by the end of the week to start doing some of that work around that manhole. But to get, to do the deep digging, they don't think it'll be done within the 30 days.
Yeah. Well, 30 days is up like this month, right?
Yeah.
So, beside the manholes, I also, they also gonna address the, the poor compaction that is just east of the houses there, or it's asphalt?
Yeah, he goes for to address all of that stuff, is my understanding, plus, plus the issues with the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
We went and looked at it and got the list items from Public Works, guys. There's gate valves need to be adjusted to final grade. There's the manhole, obviously, that's, that's really, the subgrade is settled around the manhole. That's where you got the dip. And then the service lines across the road have settled. They have punch lists, and there is gonna have to be some digging, or else some type of trenchless pipe repair, because there's separated joints in one spot, too. So, they've got some issues, I mean...
So, do, do we have anybody that'll be on hand to oversee what Jason does, who doesn't do a subpar job twice?
We, we'll hopefully be here, I mean, depends on when they schedule it. And I have John working between Turlake and Villa right now, so if we know they're gonna be here, we'll stop and monitor it, but just let us know if they don't call us.
Okay, yeah, like the, Dave can't be over all the time either, but I'm sure he'll be popping in, but nice to have some...
Not a lot of work. They show up and just get it done. It won't take long.
Be here the entire week, I'm assuming, if anybody, yeah?
Okay, that's all I have, really. Excuse us for me.
All right, it's my turn. Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Okay, down to BND loan requisition number eight.
That's based on a case, and if this goes all the way back to December of 2018, the majority is state engineering since then. Plus the $12,996 approved tonight. Make a motion to approve the payment.
Okay. Motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Taylor. Aye. Ted.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, request of citizens, we have some raffles, a raffle on the couple hall, rent, so. A is local permit for a, he's an area dollar for scholars. So, let's do that one first, and we'll do it. All rental.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Question for free, reduce hall rent. Eminem Pet Rescue, who's done, who's had a couple events there, and seniors, uh, he's a senior citizen there. Any questions or concerns on either of these?
I made a motion to approve the Eminem Pet Rescue, and he is a senior citizen.
Motion by hack.
Second.
Second by pillar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, 7A. Under introduction and reading and approval ordinances, Mr. Harvey contacted Mr. Pillar and texted me also about the work he's done with the Hazen School, and about a month and a half ago, Hazen School adopted the drone ordinance also, and it's nice to have a community member show interest and wanna come and talk about, discuss these items, especially when he's been directly involved with this. So, Mr. Harvey, if you wouldn't mind, if you wanna come up?
Sure.
Come on up, you grab a chair and slide up here and give us a little bit of the ins and outs that you dealt with, like FAA and whatever else that's... Chris even offered to do a drone test flight for us to show us what, actually with even his drone, you can see from 200 feet away. You know, how dirty someone's laundry might be in their backyard.
Have you had an opportunity to, to see what, what we've been looking at document-wise up to this point?
No, I, the only thing I've seen, I've been out of town for the last couple of weeks out of state, and my wife sent me the article from the newspaper.
Okay.
And I was, was kinda prompted to discussion, so I've not seen, you know, what else you, what you've been looking at, or what the other concerns.
Maybe we can get a copy. It's posted down the website. Oh, okay. Okay. I'm gonna see what I'm saying, okay.
Okay, I just, I, I recently, I've had an interest in drones for a couple of years. I've had my own drone. Just for recreational use for, for a couple of years, but we started teaching at school, and our video production class, the school purchased a couple drones as part of, for, for video purposes. Teach kids how to use them and how they work in film and those kind of things. And in order for us to get insurance, the school had to have a drone policy, like, they would not give you liability insurance unless there was a policy, so. They had some kind of, what do they play, document that was created by the school board association, and then across the school board meeting, I got to look at it, and we made some changes to that. And basically, when I saw that article, it kinda reminded me of what, what the school went through, because the article, and I haven't seen the actual proposed ordinance, or the wording, I just look at the summary in the article. But there's certain things that are listed, can't fly higher than 400 feet, sunset to whatever, and these, those are like, kind of picking and choosing FAA rules that are already there. So, kind of at the school, the, the idea of, you know, to follow the FAA guidelines that are already there. There's more than just the, those three that are listed in the article. There's like eight rules for recreational flying. Back up a little bit, you can fly your drone in two ways, and that's just, is going through changes right now as well. You can fly it as a hobbyist or recreational use, and I assume that's what most people are doing in town. When I'm out in my backyard and I hear zzzzz going somewhere, I think someone's just flying their drone for flying, I don't, I don't know. Or you can fly it under the Part 107 rules, which I am now, as of April 24th, a remote pilot, I completed my...
Card carrying.
A card carrying, oh no. No pilot certificate, it's not, if you think of a drone license, which allows me to I'm starting to do some work with real estate agents and photographing houses and those kind of things, where you can make a profit from, from your drone. If you charge any money and do anything, you have to have that license. And to get that, you have to go through more than just the hobbyist ones. You have to take a test, you have to go to the flight center and take a test, and renew it every two years, and learn about controlled airspace and uncontrolled airspace. So, back up a little bit, Hazen, there's different types of airspace, and Hazen, even with the, with the airport here, that's what's called Class G airspace, is uncontrolled. The FAA just released about a monthly new rules for controlled airspace, if you think this works. And think, hey, they're different, so there's really, the FAA doesn't have restrictions as far as, you know, with the airport here as well, and so, my suggestion would be to put something about following FAA regulations, because when they changed, that was the thought at school. When those regulations change, then your policy does as well. You don't have to change it every time. You know, and then you could have, if you wanted to address something else, you could have in addition, you know, if you want, if you wanted to include it being 13 and under, having adult supervision or whatever, that's not an FAA rule, but if that's what the city wanted to do. The problematic part is the part where it comes to, you know, getting permission, getting permission, because who, who controls? Who controls the airspace? You know, where, there is no line. There's no magical marker that says 200 feet, you can fly over it. You know, it goes all the way up, you know, an airplane doesn't get permission to fly over your, over your house. And for argument's sake, there's really no, it's never been defined what that is. But when I hear stuff like that, I think really the concern is privacy more than noise or, or anything else. So, you may have to research a little bit what the privacy laws offer, you know, because I don't even know how some of these things are enforced. But even as a hobbyist, they have to, you have to register your drone with them. Has everyone in town done that? I would have no idea, you know, and you have to have markings on it. It's gotta say whose it is in case it crashes, or so they can find it. Yeah, you have to label everything. I would have no, I actually don't know anybody else that owns a drone. I, when I hear those, I'm curious, like everybody else, I'm wondering if they're weedier or... But I offered to, over and over to Taylor, like, if you ever wanna see, I mean, you know, I don't know if this is coming from, people have been complaining or not, I'm not sure if it's field complaints, or people think that you can see a lot more than you actually can. So, if you really wanna know that my drone is 200 feet in the air, what you actually can see, as far as privacy, it's not a lot different than if your phone was 200 feet in the air. These don't have zooms on it. Somebody tried to introduce something to the legislature this last year on privacy law that passed the House, got killed in the Senate about couldn't record audio. Drones don't record audio. About couldn't record audio. Drones don't record audio. You would just hear zzz. That's all you hear. Cause the drone had a microphone on it. It only records video. So nobody's eavesdropping or listening to your conversation. There's no secret magical government stuff. You know what I mean? So if you ever want to see, like what can you actually see? Somebody's flying over my house. What, can they really see that?
Chris, I think I see my drone with a camera for a hundred and fifty dollars or you can spend two thousand dollars. So is it not the camera that's being upgraded on that or is it just the drone itself or?
It's both. It's both quality. It's the camera as well.
Sure.
You know, so I, have there been complaints about?
That's much complaints but concerns and questions that people wanna know, well, can, can someone just hover over my backyard and and hang out there? And what are they doing? You know, can I shoot at it if it's hanging there?
That's FAA violation to shoot at the drone.
You prefer to throw a rock down high. Yeah, look.
But that's almost, it's kind of a different issue. You know, I mean, so I, I don't know how that's addressed. I don't know how those things are enforced.
Well, I think we all know that. I think, well, I believe that drones are only gonna become more and more available, cheaper. More uses for them for every application from our coal and oil industry to ag to whatever, you know, people are, it's gonna become. I think we just wanna kind of get on top of it a little bit and, and be in front of it instead of being reactive, proactive.
And if part of what we're doing at school is teaching the kids the correct way and responsible way to do this. But if you have some ordinance that says you have to get permission for someone to drive, fly over their house. Well, if I'm at four hundred feet and I fly, I took a nice picture off the elevator and posted on Facebook. So I shot it down. But if I happen to fly over somebody's house at two hundred feet in the air, what does that mean to get permission? Do I have to have an engraving? Do I have to find? I'm not really sure. My camera's not aiming straight down. You know what I mean?
Who knows at four hundred feet? You know, who can judge what the elevation is other than, other than that? I couldn't call and say, oh, complain, hey, he's not flying four hundred feet. You know, it's, you know, we don't, don't know that. But yeah.
So did the, did the school add a fair amount of content beyond just adhering to the FAA?
No, I mean, there were some specific, I don't have the policy with me, Mr. Harvey has it, but it, yeah, it got mostly watered down to follow FAA guidelines. There were some other things in there that we have to do as far as supervision of kids if not, I can't fly them without adult present for those kind of things for school. So.
I just, I think it's prudent for us to, to utilize that as, as we look into the details of a city one. So we're not shutting down Mr. Harvey's program because we're being real tougher.
I mean, if you're not careful, then I can't use my drone at school either.
You know, we don't wanna do that. That's my point.
And wherever we fly at school, we just fly by the middle school. We haven't ventured too far out of the way, but there's the fields right there. But we hope to do something else more than, more than that. Perhaps take the kids to a house that's for sale and say, if you wanna work in this area, this is what you would do. Now, I filmed the house south of Beulah today. Okay, well, to get a shot, I might have been over somebody else's property briefly as I flew my drone that way. I mean, but I wasn't hovering, you know, the yard. But I just think if you have something about happen to get permission, then that's gonna be a whole nother layer of, what does that even mean?
It's sounding to me like that is beyond what, what the FAA is requiring at this point.
No, FAA does not require, I mean, if I wanna fly over your house, if it's been there and there. Okay, so the airplane doesn't, you know, I mean, there's no magical, you can't fly a hundred, lower than a hundred feet above somebody's house. That just doesn't exist. It's, it's all still, it's not new, but it's still kind of new.
Sure.
It's still kind of new. So I had a similar conversation with Game and Fish a couple of years ago that I was unsuccessful where they outlawed wildlife management areas, fly out by Harmont Lake, I struggle with spoils or whatever. And then I don't know if anyone ever complained, but it was a lot easier for Game and Fish to just say, no, and not submit it. No, and I was, I wrote letter advocated for, could come up with some responsible, guidelines for responsible use of drones in, in these areas. I was unsuccessful in my, in my efforts there, you know, but I just, I wanna be careful not to. Yeah, we don't have something that prohibits us from school from doing that. And there are already quite a few guidelines of FAA, FAA guidelines even for recreational users. Now who enforces that? Call FAA. I mean, that's really, I think, what you do. I mean, but if somebody's flying their drone hovering in your backyard twenty feet in the air, that's a whole different, that, that's something else. There's probably some privacy issues or that somewhere already on, on the book that, that could be checked out.
Okay. True.
So I think, I think that's all that I had to.
Yeah, I guess I, I personally, I'm bummed with everybody else. We don't wanna, last thing we wanna do is shut down the program at school. I think we should review the.
And I can only speak for myself. I'm not a drone expert nor on policy or anything like that. So I, I thank you for, for bringing that information to, to us. So that as we continue down this path of developing something for the city with a basis to go on.
Well, leave that offer out there. If you ever want some demonstration, I mean, if citizens are concerned that somebody is I think people see a drone and they think it's the government, somebody's flying, never did, whatever.
It's only Mr. Harvey.
So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris. We appreciate you coming.
Chair, have a question.
Yes.
Would there be a need for an ordinance unless the city is going to impose restrictions greater than what FAA or the state?
You know, I think, you know, the FAA is pretty broad and there's, um, swath, you know, we, I don't know if we wanna come up and do things that are above and beyond.
No, you know, technically be necessary.
Right.
Cause FAA guidelines are already, are open for everybody here to do.
Right. And like, like Mr. Harvey mentioned, if they're evolving and changing, you know, probably easier to go by that than us having to change and, or come up with our own.
So I'd be curious with the state.
You know, maybe, maybe part of it, and I, I don't know, I might be speaking out of school here, is much like the school, they had a requirement to be an owner and an operator of the drones for an insurance policy, they had to have a program in place. Maybe for us, for liability issues within the confines of the city. If somebody was out flying a drone and they came down and they smashed your windshield or they hit your kid or your dog or something like that. Maybe you have to have something in place to, to cover for, for those who have a situation. I don't know.
Seems like that'd be more of a civil matter.
Maybe.
I'd be able to need insurance to decide that.
Okay.
You know, in law, the theory is this cone that exists from your lot boundaries that goes to the center of the earth and to the highest heavens, you know, that supposedly your territory. Why are you gonna put a no trespassing sign up there? Pull a balloon or something.
Well, there are quite a few cities that have ordinances and I'm not sure if they decided disregard or go along with FAA guidelines that add to them. But I, I don't know if we really, I don't wanna make a ordinance for the sake of making an ordinance if we don't, we don't have to, or do we just adopt the FAA?
Dan brings up a good point too. Um, you know, do you put rules out there that are virtually unenforceable? Or, or if they are enforceable, who's going to enforce them?
And we've, we've definitely kept, uh, the police in the loop and we've also talked to Judge Stern, you know, like, okay, if this happens, how are you willing to enforce? Are you gonna, if we have a drone that's hovering in someone's backyard twenty feet away, do you call the cops and have them follow that drone to wherever it lands? And they have to enforce a fee or a fine? That, you're right, enforcement is gonna be an issue. I think it's more maybe just raising awareness about being good neighbors and.
And I, I think if we move forward, just asking questions and, and taking a look at this, that we still have an opportunity to then determine whether or not it is something that we truly do need within our city or not. But at least we've done some due diligence and we, we have an understanding of the topic.
Right. So in July, we have a second reading coming of this. So at, at that point, we decide to table it or scrap, scrap it at that point or, or? Remanded to just follow the FAA?
The school is a single page policy. I'll send that out to you tonight and then can take a look at that.
Perfect.
And go from there.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, Chris. Alright, moving along, productions reading approval of ordinances, no, I'm sorry, download and approval of applications and building permits. So we have conditional use permits with Dog Park for, um, Judge Bush and with, he's a parking wreck. Shannon, go ahead, come on over and let us know your.
Um, yeah, they unanimously approved it. Their only stipulation would be, um, two years. Um, which seems like it's not, or being used at that purpose any longer than they would want it to. Close up and turn it back to the city property with the specification of having events revoked. So they're gonna put it up, they'll take it down when the park is no longer being used. So those are the two conditions set up.
So all the members except for one person was at the zoning meeting and it was me and us to approve the conditional use. Which would be a lot easier transfer of use versus leasing or feeding it over and, but, uh, so that was the the concern that, um, Mr. Bush was there and he just said, well, after that two years, is it closed down? No, it does not. It, you know, because we all agree if it's continued to be used, it stays, stays in use and open. And, uh, park board will be the ones that'll be responsible for, uh, mowing, maintaining, cleaning. Um, I think that here said something about the Girl Scouts also being. Girl Scouts will, uh, assist, yep, when needed. So I guess that'd be the park board's decision of when that assistance would be needed by the Girl Scouts, not ours. So. Dan, anything else you wanna op- offer or Nathan?
And that is something that was discussed with the, the Girl Scout organization in town. I, I see the document says that there are future girls looking to do bronze and silver projects and stuff like that. But they've all talked about that and said, you know, we're in agreement that as, as a Girl Scout organization here in Hazen, we would, we would assist with these things.
Yeah, there's a few other Girl Scouts that are interested. Once this is completed to continue. That improvement, so just kind of like doing like a sprint cleaner. That's what's been, that's here. But whatever she can complete, other than that fencing and the benches and things, you know, that potential for other Girl Scouts for bronze and silver works to continue. So I can see that drawing there, we have like a small shoulder in the center there. She's thinking she can get all the other stuff installed with the amount of money she has, except probably that. And that would be there for, you know, bronze and silver work projects for other Girl Scouts, feature tree planting and things like that.
And will parking for this be in that cul-de-sac area or where?
Along the street.
Along the street?
Okay.
And even across the street there, and I think it's private property, but it's kind of attached to our alley there where it used to be in the corner. But remember the reason why we're going through the conditional use permit is because that area is zone R one, which does not allow for recreational use. And that's why we, another reason why we had to go through this process to get the zoning board together to approve it. So. We just now need the blessing of the board to approve the conditional use. Unless anybody has any other questions, we need a motion. So, motion by Hack to approve the conditional use permit. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Yeah, I, Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Nathan bundle, they start on the fence.
As far as the project goes, um, we have to supply more timeframes which we can add in together. The volunteers should probably set up another Facebook post out there and help give the beautiful as far as that goes and let everyone know as far as when that date would be. So right now she's just kind of in the, the stages of getting cost estimates and everything, finalizing that and then we're waiting for the final approval before she purchases anything. So, um, that'd be basically where she's at. She's at this point now. Got approval. She'll be forward acquiring everything that she needs and then plan for that date.
Good luck.
Now, Monty, you had alluded to the need for a documented agreement then between the cities and.
Choice.
Brothers agreement. Okay, between the cities. That's just going to happen.
Yeah.
That'll come back in.
Okay, moving along, under reports, water sewer. Streets cemetery.
The only thing I really got is, and I'm gonna pass this around, I'm gonna let Dave talk on this. Uh, Dave called me last week. The gentleman from Dakota Sentation, who we traded our own compactor. Uh, David talked earlier and Dave mentioned the turnkey. But they've called me on this and have to talk.
Yeah, I put out a couple of feelers, a couple of different old carts that need a bigger tart cart. One we have is like a two hundred gallon or three fifty gallons. And we can do, when we're back sales, we can do two hundred gallon a day. I heard a little bit sort of, just every other day we're running for, for oil and there might come a time where we have to travel a little bit farther to get oil. And looking at like a six hundred gallon cart, salesman came in, this is a six hundred gallon cart. It's a two thousand twelve. That swan set equipment sold out a far ago and delivered it to the western part of the state. It's never been used. Brand new, never had a drop of oil in it. It's got two tenths of an hour on the elevator. They're in the process of trading it in. We would have first chance at it when it does come up for sale or I'm gonna advertise it until we make a decision or whatever. We don't wanna build, we'll advertise it. But they're gonna take it back to their shop and completely go through it, being it has been sitting since two thousand twelve. Make sure the tires aren't dry rotted, uh, that there's any wiring issues or whatever. No, it would be in basically.
Would they warranty it at all?
I didn't ask him about that. I just get kind of like, you know, I'm assuming probably not being, there'd be no manufacturer warranty because of the state.
You know, the other thing I liked that we talked about earlier, Dave, was the safety aspect of it. Our, that we have now is, does not have any warning lights on, any safety, uh, directions at all. This, this has lights, got the blinking amber beacon in the cell.
It's, it's diesel fired and they're saying they're getting away from propane fired for heating that these fuel burners are actually a safer, safer heat other than the propane. It's got a propane tank on it and that's just for the, for the hand torch for warming your murders or a little small, small item. But otherwise it's all self-contained. So nine point eight horsepower diesel engine. You can see the fuel, the, all that stuff sits over the top of the fuel tank. So it's a self-contained.
So the only thing that the propane bottle's for is for.
It's just for like a hand, a hand torch, yeah. If you're doing a little patch area that you had to warm up, that's the only thing the propane bottle's for.
In this, this spring, we had, how many? In this, this spring, we had, how many times we talked to guys, oh, Kildare Underwood, we were having to run all over western North Florida to find oil for this, this thing.
So this is 600 gallon, I'll find out exactly how low you can get it, but I'm assuming that if you run it down to where when you went to get oil, you'd be buying 500 gallons. And so every time we'd run, we'd run by anywhere from two to maybe two and a quarter.
So you potentially would pull this to a location like Kildare or someplace like that?
And Kildare, yeah, we, we've been telling the Mercer Colony, but they had troubles with their kettle, and they just about moved through the repairs to get it up. So that would have been running to center or Kildare or wherever to get oil, but we spent a lot of time running just back and forth to deal with to get oil over this, which we've been actually going all the whole three days or whatever, without having to make the trip to get oil.
Our kettle must be a 1970s model, and did you see if it's back original use or a roof?
Yeah, a roofed kettle was classified as, they always had the smaller capacities, but like the tar guts or whatever.
So talk a little about the financials.
The salesman that wasn't finalized on their trading at the end or whatever, but he was talking anywhere from, depending on what they'd have to do, to like 24 to 29 gallons.
Versus new?
He was saying he thought they were probably close to 60 new, I don't know if they're that high, but what it is, is, uh, he had a picture of the inside of the tank, and it's, you know, I think they just never had a drop of oil in it. So it's a brand-new, brand-new used one, is I guess what you'd call it.
So there would be no action on this until we actually know what kind of pricing that they would offer up to us?
Yeah, and the salesman was wondering if we were in, you know, how interested we were, because they wanna turn it, you know, we're, we're not interested. It's gonna go in their flyer or whatever, and with the open market, but they are, we were looking, they said, he'd give us a little time to make a decision. If we are interested, and it would be based on price.
So, so if he gave us a price, he would be willing to wait till the next scheduled commission meeting?
Yes.
We don't need a motion.
No. Unless, I, I, I think we definitely would be an upgrade that would be beneficial for us, I'm not sure.
I'm sure he still went, I'd, I'd like to see what's all, if there's anything else, but before we really.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I, that would be a huge upgrade.
It sounds like they're gonna be taken to their facility and mined off, they're not gonna make a trip up there when they get it, it might die or whatever, they're gonna inspect it or look it over, get more information.
So Dave, as I've seen, I guess, you know, like the slugs of tar, you know, and if you can, like, warm up, to just be able to, like, warm those up, you know?
No, that's a different, different type of product. A lot of them were kind of like a double boiler, they got a, a tank with a tank around the outside, so just a lot of that is more for rubberized.
Fire heated.
Yep, fire heated, built it so the actual fire can't be in contact, it's just like through an oil layer or whatever. Now, whether the industry is going to that, eventually, it's hard to say.
So then I guess, so I guess like in the past, I guess, we, I guess, like, uh, turned streets, I guess, as long as, as long as the Mercer County, Mercer County, I guess, like shop was able to give us.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be going over there and purchasing to them.
Yeah, so, so now, I guess, even if they, I guess, like, close down, you know, you know, I guess, the middle of June, let's say, you know? You know, is this, like, this market be, like, open up? You know?
I've never asked, uh, like, Bismarck or how long to keep their cattle roaming north of the state. I know the center has their cattle, but I don't know how late in the season they run theirs, or.
Is that something we look at, is getting our own cattle?
I think it was part of the thing with having this extra capacity was you could leave more in there, so if we have patch or later, you could fire it up.
Yeah, we have more supply, just on hand ourselves, instead of 200 sitting out back, we'd have a full 600 gallons. And you can do a lot of crack sealing with 600 gallons.
And it can just, it can just sit in there for an extended period of time?
Yeah, 'cause like our kettle, our old one is sitting behind the shop full, that sits on there long full. So if a guy needed a middle end, right, maybe you can fire it off, it just takes a long time to warm up your golden tar.
I did, you mentioned that, I did ask you that when you called me. It sounds like the salesman on, on the, what, chart, or the, the, uh, storage, sounds like it's a, it's a potential not want to go down that avenue. Sounds like there's a lot of different.
Yeah, that, that's kind of a, kind of where you wanna do some research probably before you buy a storage tank or whatever.
Well, they always look messier than hell. You drive by the one at center, you see that big wood thing, it's exploded tar all, all the time.
I think that's why you look for a moment or for a while, or the colony was kind of thinking about beating out of it and said repairing their tanks.
Jared, have you had any experience with these things or, or tanks, bowling tanks?
Not really from this end, I mean, we do recommend crack sealing, one to three-year window, depending what you use. If you've rubberized stuff, it should last longer, but I've also had major problems with rubberized crack sealants. When we tried to overlay over the top of it, we had issues, so, no, not, not on this end, but crack sealing is worth its money and, or weight in gold, and keep crack sealing, for sure.
Alright, so just Dave and Jason stay in contact with Swanson and, um, let us know, I think we're, we're interested.
I'll handle that, we're interested, and I'll move to the next step.
Anything else for streets?
We got first shot.
Yes.
Dave, do you have anything, anything else?
I called on the payloader, uh, it's on the going back together stage or whatever, he's looking that made by the end of the week, they'd have to get there. So probably wouldn't see it till first part of next week, minimum actually, but nothing out of the ordinary, other than that turntable being bad, so that's the dollar mark we should be sitting at. And they've got other inspections, they've put the other items on it, and they've searched their days, the hours on it, it's looking pretty decent, so. Should have a good machine again, once it comes back.
Alright. Finance, question?
Nothing at this time.
Police, fire, four street.
Our police chief, Casey, sent out a notice to the other members of the fire department about the opportunity for a scheduled burn tomorrow evening. And that is for the home that was purchased, just on the other side of City Hall here. And, uh, if he gets the appropriate response, then that will be happening tomorrow evening. Otherwise, it would be scheduled.
Because they want plenty of guys on hand.
They wanna make sure that they've got a full group of, of individuals to do that, so. I throw that out there, so talk to your friends, if they see a lot of smoke tomorrow night, uh, don't be overly concerned, it should be under control.
And I know, uh, Casey, this, and kind of it's your Dave, you too, but gone around and talked to all the neighbors up in the area. The houses on all four sides, they're all, they're all aware and, uh, are all okay with it, as long as there's several, one of the guys there to help out, so.
And I'll talk to Ryan and Dick tomorrow, and, uh, we'll go over and make sure the floor drain and the water inside, you know, the water feed or whatever is capped properly, so when it's burned and it gets done, I'll tell them.
I took down the big pine tree that's in front of there today, so it's part of the way. That's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
Maybe I have Mr. Harvey drawing video of that thing. Good, good, uh, video, uh, training video for the guys that.
That's the problem, the guys are excited, and if I get rid of the train on a whole, some actual player like that, so.
And then, uh, on, on four street, you had mentioned that you wanna brown with our four street.
I did, Mike Freilich and I drove around about two and a half hours today, um, looking at, boy, they planted about 40 trees in the boulevards and in the nursery this year. I think this, and I've done it in the past with, uh, uh, previous two foresters have done this, and our trees are looking right now, I'm no forester, but better than they ever have, I think we've got the, the amount of dead trees, uh, Dutch elm. But that's really started showing up in that first week of July, Dutch elm does with the changing of, the leaves turn yellow, uh, early, but, uh, things look really good. Mr. Freilich is gonna spend more time with, with summer help and just doing more pruning and trimming and cutting. There are, there are numerous trees that have been marked, and he and I marked a couple more today that need to, boulevard trees that need to come down. Uh, he's got a list of people he needs to send letters to that have, uh, dead or rotten trees that are in their yards that need to come down too. So, uh, it was, it's a good, good overview today.
And I don't know if we wanna consider, maybe also out on Facebook, just referencing our ordinances as it relates to, or the, the trees and the removals of trees that might be diseased and stuff like that. So people understand when, when Mike or somebody representing the city comes to them, what, uh, what the outcome might be, if there is a diseased tree, who has responsibility for the removal of those things, how quickly, all of that type of stuff. Because we do have a pretty detailed ordinance on that, I believe.
Nathan said the trees that are marked to come down are marked by the state forester too, which is always gives more credibility when someone says, why are you cleaning that tree down? You know, it's, it's not just our being ambiguous about it, it's, it's the forester, so.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Buster's not here. And her mind, I just, the only thing is that I've talked asphalt pile, uh, across asphalt, asphalt. I know, I've talked to Dave and Monty, we could have sold that pile off twice already by now. Dave had a guy who said he'd take 20, uh, semi-loads. Uh, we've also had people request it for cheaper than what we're offering it, and I think it's a commodity. So if you, I think we're all, to understand that, we'd like to keep that for our community, ma- you know, mainly obviously the city use for alleys and, and, uh, parking areas and whatnot, but, uh, you know, people that live in our community or farmers that are nearby that need it for some stuff, that's who we wanna be selling it to, not sending it out of town or to another construction. The city of Stanton wanted a lot of it. And as we know, we, this pile, we were kind of lucky with this last project. But the pile we had crushed before that, that, it took 20 some years for that pile to grow and for us to even be able to pay for it, you know, have someone come in and bring it crusher. So I think, I, I actually direct to Monty and, and Dave, we need to be selective and not be selling this to anybody that, uh, is really removed from our community, let's make sure it's benefit for us. And we're not gonna go below 25 bucks a ton, you know, if, if anything, I think we could probably get more than that, because like Dave's saying, if people want it for 25 and they're able to take 10 semi-loads, they're selling it for 35 or 45 dollars too, so anyhow, um, it is a large pile, we won't run out quickly, but I hope we don't run out in five years even, so. Casey?
A while years ago, as we, we kind of, I guess, started this project, this one thing I was told is that, I mean, you know, if you leave that pile for there's, you know, I guess, two or three years, and it starts to come up, kind of, I guess, uh, form together again, it gets harder, you know? Is that gonna be a problem?
Well, you know, we've talked about that and.
There's quite a bit of concrete in this, or on this batch too, which makes a difference on the re-bonding.
I know that we had some stuff, there was just millings piled up up there, and you could walk up, it, it was like a concrete pile, you know, it could, when it gets in July, it just kind of melts together and you can't do anything, but, but this stuff up here, you can just take a shovel into it now. I don't know, Jared, how long, you know, if we expect it to get, you know, over, if we get rained on and hot and rain and snow and everything else, or this starts to get more solid, but is it hard to break up with the payloader if we need to, or?
There's, there is a small pile left over from the first batch we had, and you can break that apart. I mean, you can take a bucket, drop it on the ground, and you can crumple it back up, it isn't too bad.
I just remember the pile they had up at, at the airport for a long time, I'm, I remember the same pile, but it looked like they almost, it looked like it was a pretty solid pile, like, when you dug into it, it didn't fall, it just kind of, but I, I don't know, Casey, if it's gonna become less valuable in time, I don't think so. I think, I think our taxpayers would like us to keep it here for use around town, I believe, so. Anyhow, it's just a discussion we've had a few times, and I just wanna bring you guys all on the same, same discussion, so. Casey, you have questions from people? Alright, Correspondents, fireworks display, Hazen Chamber. Monty, what do you?
Just that they are seeking some kind of, from assistance if.
Okay.
If they're willing to do maybe.
Have they, they have even sort of a, what's?
No, I think she doesn't mention anything about dollars. Do you have any precedence? I think the city has used some of the contribution, some of their general contribution, this latest contribution in the past, more than a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, assuming it's hard for them to plan on what to order, um, you know, it's not like we can argue them to.
As far as I know, they've got everything ordered.
Oh, they do, okay.
Some additional funding to be raised, so.
Okay, okay. We can wait until, you know, they have donation boxes out, so we can tell, you know, what they get up to the end and help them afterwards or, or upfront, it doesn't matter to me, I guess.
Well, that may give us a better idea, like you said, Gary. Look to kind of help.
That's why, and you meet again before they do the displays, so.
Yeah.
Maybe the action tonight is just to get an update from Antfurnet as we get closer to our next meeting and see where they're, see where they're at.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, B, Sales Tax Administration, I'm sure, Monty.
Uh, the State Tax Commissioner's Office collects and distributes our sales tax money. Uh, their fee is $35 per year, 3% of the tax collected, it's always been at the free, $35 per year. That's for them to collect, distribute it back out, and do all the auditing and all of those state assets coming in from the businesses, so it's a pretty reasonable price.
So you just need a motion to reestablish that?
We'll sell that, that's some concerns.
Yeah, motion by Keller. Second, second by stern, discussion. Pat, any concerns that you, you see, or?
Except you should be signing off on us.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, more discussion.
Whatever. What are they, $300 or something?
Yeah. So then, so then, what are they gonna?
So there's, I'll advise with them about that, 'cause obviously that's higher than $35 per permit here.
Yeah.
I'll bring that to their attention, but we won't sign it until we have that clarified.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and discussion is we will not sign it till we have clarification.
Yeah.
Need a roll call for that, Monty? Roll call.
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi. New business, I'm gonna respond for 2019. New business, auditor's bond for two thousand nineteen.
We've been given an annual requirement to the Dakota Sanitation board. He said that twenty five percent of the average money separate to the control of the auditor, or two hundred fifty thousand dollars, whichever it is less. And as you can see, twenty five percent of the average was one point one million.
Need a motion to accept that?
So.
Motion by Wolf?
Second.
Second by Pat? Discussion? Roll call.
Wolf?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Keller?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you. All right, last name of the business is board appointments. And city appointments for portfolios. I guess, to be honest, I've not thought anything about this, I don't. This is one of discussion about it now, do we have to decide now, Monty, or can this be at the next meeting, or?
The only thing that you would have to decide tonight, because their terms, well, I guess we could do it, cause their terms would start July first for. I guess you can approve them on the first and they start, so, no, I guess realistically you don't feel, I'll take a look at it some more.
Okay. Do we have any of, of board appointments that we need to?
The only one was a special assessment commission we missed in March, Renee has agreed that she would continue serving on that, so. We won't have any action by then until this project is final, so if we appoint that for July first meeting, that'll be sufficient.
Okay. Well, what about you guys, are you, you. Wanting to change your portfolio or do something different, or? Be the president of the council, even?
Don't bother, there's a kitchen next time.
I guess personally, I, I'm fine with how it's going, I, unless anybody wants to change it.
I guess I wouldn't mind a change.
No, that, that's fine.
What do you got? You, you'd be, you'd like to do something different, Casey, possibly? Pat, you have a comment?
Is Dr. Blacksmith running the unit?
I already sold his house.
Um, yeah, as of right now, it's kind of limbo, I was gonna see if we could just appoint Custer District Health. But I haven't, I didn't get a chance to visit Keith today, cause I know they are appointed in other jurisdictions as the health officer, so we can. I'll get some clarification on that, and that's it.
Casey, Casey, you have water sewer garbage right now? If these guys are, are happy where they are, I'd swap with you if you'd like, do something different.
Oh, I can. Because the judge.
Oh, okay.
You wanna come back here? Is that you? To go down the. Yes.
I'm. Happy we're around.
I'd just like to be more out first and. Well, I. Once you guys. Think about it and email me or Monty and. Actually, email Monty. And we'll talk to him, and make the decision at the next meeting. I guess if you wanna move, you know, it can't be police and fire, but. Nancy may not want water sewer. So. Yeah. What's up?
Nancy might want water sewer.
Maybe she, maybe she wants streets. So let's think about it and, uh. Ask each, talk to each other, you know, what, what you, you're involved with and let us know. My thing. Okay, the, I think that's it, that's the business. Approve of bills. Second by Stern? Second by Stern? Discussion? Roll call.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Now. Hi, Keller?
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you.